You going for a record meeting tonight?
Yeah.
Always, always.
Just take enough sips of water that you don't run out.
I want from the mic off.
Eric, when you're ready, I'll start.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe I am delayed.
Who's the time?
I don't want to be each to be. Your face is a fart.
That'd be cool.
No fighting over that.
Okay, well, I'll let Teresa Angelic get up here and then we're good to go.
We waited for the two most important people.
You're right here, Teresa.
That's right.
Yeah, Chris wasn't here, so I started to squeeze over and I was like, oh.
Want me to give you time to sit down so you can stand up?
Sure.
Teresa, she's gonna be like leaving off. Does she know that yet?
Do what?
Do you know about your speech?
Well, yeah.
Okay, just a second.
Why do you think I'm here?
Welcome to this non-regular meeting, a joint meeting of the Reedfield Select Board and the Budget Committee for our public budget meeting and hearing. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, I don't see any members of the public online, and there are none present in the room. So we're doing this meeting for posterity on the recording. Yeah, I think he's not using Zoom because it's down the river, so he's gonna be recording. So that means they won't hear me, right? And can't ask questions?
Can you tell them that, Jer?
Okay, so evidently we have a Zoom issue and the meeting will be recorded tonight.
Zoom is back up and recording twice.
Okay.
Okay, Zoom is back up and we're recording twice. I'm not sure what that means, but I'm guessing once on Zoom and once on YouTube. Are they in? Can you see that?
So they may be using a third, Jer, and if they're on a different Zoom and not in, they might be on a different link. They should use the one that's on the Budget Committee page, not the Select Board, not the actual Select Board link. This one's a different link. That might be. Oh, well, um.
So for the recording, Jer is trying to get a link out to people via the chat, and we will go ahead and get started if someone can give me a screen on the control board.
I'm sorry, I used the Select Board link.
Oh, okay, that's probably why we're.
I will send that link.
Yeah, and I'll switch over as well.
All right, we're gonna use the Select Board link for Zoom tonight, just to keep us all on our toes, which is fine. Oh, I'm getting a paper copy. Thank you. I could have used the computer, but since we printed the paper, let's utilize it. Okay. So, welcome. This is our first public hearing and meeting. It's technically a meeting where the public can ask questions and make suggestions and comments, and the Budget Committee and Select Board may consider those comments, and changes are possible to be made at this time. The next budget hearing, we have the board will be set, and it will just be for comments, not for any changes to be made at that time. We're going to review the budget and meeting goals after we introduce ourselves, and then Eric is gonna give us, hopefully not a full 90 minutes of presentation of the summary of the budget and the draft meeting, town board meeting, and if there's any other business at the end, we will entertain that. And. Then we'll have closing comments. If I sit back, that's better. So I will welcome you from the Select Board chair, and to my right, we have.
Steve DeAngelis, Select Board member.
David Litten, Select Board.
Any comments from the Select Board on the budget? Well, I have one, a huge.
There's a surprise, a surprise.
A huge thank you to the Budget Committee for all the work you've done. You've done the lion's share of the meetings. We discussed what you've come up with with Eric and Teresa at our meetings, on nowhere near the detail that you've done, and we're very appreciative of all the work that you've done for us. And I'll turn it over to Marty.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I'm Marty Hirsch, presently the president of the Budget Committee. Ellen Snyder is here with us tonight, and Pete Davis as well. Chris Simmons and Ed Simmons are also active members. Chris Simmons and Ed Simmons were also active members of the committee, but they couldn't be here tonight. I'll just make a very few comments. The Budget Committee has met six times to review and discuss the emerging budget. And that includes one, one previous meeting with the Select Board. At each of these meetings, Eric presented updated budget drafts. Theresa provided some very detailed account information, and Angelica took minutes to record the important points of our discussions. Eric is going to go over the budget in detail, but the Budget Committee would like to highlight a few key issues. On the expense side, the accounts for ambulance and dispatch services are showing significant increases over the current year. There's nothing we can do about this in the short run, but we recommend that exploring options for the future be put on the schedule, leading to the following year's budget. On the revenue side, early drafts reflected a significant decrease in investment income as rates on CDs fell. But we reviewed the cash flow patterns of the previous few years, and we looked at the amount of cash that's in the fund balance, and we felt that we could safely increase the investment income to a modest degree by investing more of the cash. Fortunately, we have a very good cash flow pattern. And finally, the draw on the undesignedated fund balance. It's three hundred thousand dollars in this budget, and it's there to moderate the impact of the town's portion of the total cost for the year on the, on the mill rate. However, Eric provided some long-range projections that suggest that this may not be possible to sustain in the future at the same level. And for that reason, the Budget Committee is also recommending that we undertake a more detailed review of the fund balance going forward in preparation for, for the '06-'07 budget. That, that we hope will take place after all of the most immediate things, namely, the '05-'06 budget has been resolved. There was a lot more that we looked at and listened to, but Eric is going to be discussing all of that in detail.
Thank you, Marty. Anyone else from the Budget Committee have any comments? Not at this time. Okay, I think you meant the '25-'26 and the '26-'27 budget, yeah. Just so we're on the same page. Eric, you're gonna tell me when I'm off of the green pages, right? So I'm still on, because these aren't color-coded.
Yeah, I know, the printer didn't get them. I mean, it saved us a few pennies, but.
So, is it possible for us to put this up so people watching online will be able to see the screens that we're talking about?
Absolutely, we can do that right now, and you guys can.
So I'll move on while we're doing that. So the budget process summary to date has been fourteen public meetings and discussions to develop and discuss the budget since October. As Marty said, one of those was a joint meeting where we discussed the capital improvement plan. I believe that was in December. We've had review and comment by members of the public boards and committees, the Budget Committee and the Select Board. I think there were probably also some town employees in there as well, and we thank everyone for their participation. Both committees have reviewed the budget details for all the departments and divisions, as well as revising after reviewing the five-year capital plan and supporting policy, and I think Marty's given us our suggestion for next year, which is to review the undesignedated fund balance use in maybe a more long-range way than just year to year. Our meeting goals for tonight is to present the municipal budget in a summary form, to hear any questions, concerns, and comments related to this municipal budget. We're not discussing the county budget or the school budget this evening. We're gonna highlight and discuss the key warrant articles relating to the land use ordinance, and they will, the planning board will have their own public hearing for those issues, and will provide information on the town meeting secret ballot vote. Next slide, please. Our ongoing budget goals set by the Select Board were to maintain fiscal responsibility and spend conservatively. We've done pretty well with that this year, not as well as in the past, because costs are rising, and there's just not enough we can do to maintain a very low rate. We're gonna fund all needed and necessary expenses to maintain our town and programs, and of course, that's subject to town meeting vote. So if we're not doing it at the level the residents wish, they need to vote and let us know. We want to minimize the budget impacts to taxpayers and maintain a stable and sustainable level of debt. Reedfield has very little bonded debt. We're in very good position that way. We want to use our fund balances responsibly. That was a big change over the last couple of years. That was worked on with our auditors and our finance director and the town manager. Utilize a long-range capital planning process, which we've been doing for about fifteen years now. We want to consider the town budget separate from the school and county budgets, which we do faithfully every year, and work together towards the public good. So hopefully, we're able to meet those goals. Is this still green, Eric?
Well, that was blue, but I wasn't gonna stop that.
Okay.
But this is green.
Okay. So our specific goals for this year, set by the Select Board back in September when we had our Select Board retreat, was to prioritize completion, completion of projects already in progress, which was the Reedfield Fairgrounds Community Park, which Eric, you will give us an update on.
I certainly can, yeah.
Okay. The Church Road Sidewalk, both of those projects are fully moving forward, and then there's this salt and sand shed. That is not moving forward. We've had some work done to determine what that might cost, and the cost is exorbitant, that we've been told. So that project is kind of being put on hold. Eric may give us some more on that. This is part of trying to keep a stable and sustainable level of debt, because that project would be very expensive. We want to improve the municipal use of technology, which I think we're already doing very well, but Eric, along with some input from Jaren, have been making a lot of progress in that area this year. Continue to improve communication and collaboration in the budget process. I'm not sure we can improve much, but we'll certainly keep continuing. I think it's been working well. I asked Eric earlier today how many members of the public have been involved, and that was no one who wasn't presenting. So I'm going to take that as meaning that we're doing an okay job, or people don't want to come out and say anything in public. We want to better define capital projects and further develop the capital investment plan. So there's always room for improvement. It's really what we're saying. Now, is it you, Eric?
Uh, yeah.
All right, turning it over to Eric.
Okay, so I'll start by continuing the round of thank yous, and just to say I appreciate the work the Budget Committee and Select Board have done, the trust you put me and staff to bring this information forward, and I really do appreciate the work that Theresa and Angelica have done to help with, with the budget and with recording our, our meetings. Also, all the boards and committees that have been involved in this, everybody's had to look pretty closely at their budgets. Everybody kind of heard the, the call to try to be a little bit more conservative this year in areas that we could, and I think everybody heard that and responded. So what I see really is a fairly lean budget that has some, you know, has some mitigating things that you know, that are putting us into that situation that you mentioned, Catherine, earlier, where we're not able to maintain that lower level of increase that we've seen over the past several years. And I can talk more about that and give some more justification, but in the end, it doesn't feel like it's where we should be, but it's, it's where we are, and we have to, I think, work through that. And again, I just want to say I appreciate everybody being willing to to scrap around a little bit and try to make it as lean as we can, recognizing that things are, are not the way we'd like them to be. So one of the first things that, that's notable with our, you know, commitment process for taxes is the value and, and mill rate. And so the assessors recommending, and I fully support, a twenty-five percent factor being applied to our residential commercial valuations. So as you know, we've been factoring to match state valuation for several years, and we have reasons for doing that, most of which relate to the money that we get from the state. And if we have everything else staying equal, a twenty-five percent increase in the, in the valuation would result in a twenty-five percent decrease in the mill rate. But that's not where we are. We do have a fairly sizable increase in municipal spending in net, when you look at revenues and expenses. And so the estimated mill rate is about two point one five, and the total mill rate is estimated to be twelve point three four. And the combined rate last year was thirteen point three nine. So we've got a, a small decrease, maybe ten or fifteen percent decrease in the, in the total mill rate, but we're looking at a, a higher value. So that does result in, in more taxes. And the, in aggregate, the town is a small part of that. We also do see increases coming in on the county and the school side, and I'll just touch on those when we get to that. But any questions about the, the, the valuation changes, factoring any of that right now before we move on?
No, I guess, just to reiterate, the rising mill rate. No, the rise in valuation means a decrease in the mill rate.
That's right, and we're seeing that, just not to the same, it's not proportional, right, which means we've got some more money coming out.
So then after that, which makes it level, then there's going to be an increase in the budgets, and that will be the tax increase that people will see.
Correct.
Okay. I know that's a hard concept for a lot of us to get around, because they're all, they increase my value, and that's now why my taxes have gone up. But it's not.
It's not. So municipal budget highlights, I'll start off and just run through this, and if anybody has any questions, certainly feel free to jump in and ask, or so I'll start with capital reserves and assessments and labor. Those are the three main drivers for increased operating expenses. So we have a three percent negotiated wage increase. We have no new staff and no new staff time, but we actually cut a few hours at the beach. So we're actually leaner, again, in that area than we were, and a three percent increase is pretty modest compared to where inflation has been and where it's likely going. Major increases in winter ambulance and dispatch that Marty alluded to, and the cost of paving and road maintenance. We do have road budgets that, that are, you know, approaching a million dollars between paving and maintenance, and that's something we've always been committed to, and it is hard to maintain a high level of service in this environment without increasing costs. So state revenue sharing and excise taxes are uncertain, but we did budget those conservatively. I think in both those cases, we may have budgeted a small increase, but that was over last year's budget, and definitely not in, in line with what we've seen for past revenues, right? So that's important to note, that it might be an increase, but it's still fairly conservative. And then we were using twenty-five thousand dollars less in the unassigned fund balance to lower taxes. So Marty alluded to that as well, and I'll talk more about that later. The net municipal costs will increase by about nine point five percent, or ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that accounts for about seventeen point five percent of property taxes. So the remainder are other sources. And I want to point out that we're at an interesting point right now, where our total municipal budget is just about a million dollars. So a one hundred thousand dollar increase in, in tax needs, which in the grand scheme of municipal operations isn't a lot, results in a ten percent increase in, in what people might be paying out of pocket. So it's an interesting, interesting time right now with that. And again, I think that we can explain most of those increases, hopefully, to satisfy, to the satisfaction of folks who want to know. So the school, county, and budgets, we have information at renhook.org. They're having, I think, their final budget meeting tonight. Again, we scheduled ours first, and then they changed it. So I, I, we tried awful hard, but I don't want to take any responsibility for that, because it wasn't us. But they've got a bigger budget, so they probably trump us anyway. The, the school budget is looking like it's gonna be a four point six seven percent increase, which is two hundred and three thousand. So even though the school budget is projected to be less percentage-wise, the, the dollar impact is double of that of the municipal budget. I did hear from Sean Roderick, the Chair of the School Board today, that they likely will be able to approve something that might be a little bit less than this number. And I truly hope that's the case, because that will help with the overall tax burden that we're gonna be facing this year. And the school budget, per, per usual, is about seventy-five, seventy-four percent of the tax dollar that's paid. The county budget is fifteen point seven percent increase, so higher percentage amount than the town, but only seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand in actual dollar impact. So not that much less than us when you look at dollars. But what we're seeing is across the board increases, and that's, that's gonna be a difficult thing for, for residents to absorb, I think. And I, I will say, I think everybody's done their part, done their best to keep things down. Catherine has certainly kept a close eye on the county budget for us, and the school, I know they've taken a different approach and are dealing with some tough issues. So I'll just say that in general, I think we're all doing the best we can. So this is the graph that we show, current projected tax impacts. The top line, that's the larger dash in red, is the school. Below that, smaller dash, is the town, and then we have the county at the bottom. And everybody has a COVID dip in one way or another, and but what we do see is, is people, these different organizations, starting to get back on a, a certain trajectory after they've recovered from, from COVID. So we saw that last year starting to stabilize, and if you look at this year's numbers for the RSU, if, if the pandemic had never happened, they'd probably, probably be right where they are right now. And I'd say the, the town, we're, we're very similar to that, although I'd say we, we've kept a slower pace of growth. And the county is the one area where I have concerns, and I've talked to Catherine about this and expressed it to the county administrator as well. Their rate of growth is really accelerating, and I think that's something we have to keep an eye on. Not much we can do about it, other than electing and appointing folks that can represent us in that process, because there is no direct vote on the county budget. But that's the picture that we're looking at right now. And before I go, any, any questions on, on that, big picture?
I'll just make a comment on the county budget. So I was lucky enough to be appointed to the Kennebec County Budget Committee this year. There are three districts for the county, and there are two elected officials from each district and one appointed one. The county isn't growing as fast as it looks. It is by choice. Jails are being funded far less than what they had been. So the county jails together asked for fourteen million dollars of funding from the state, and the governor put four million in her budget. So it's affecting Kennebec County by about a million and a half dollars. They're also not funding the mandatory drug program that they have to do for all of the addicts that they have coming in and out of the jail regularly, and that's over a million, almost somewhere between a million and two million dollars a year. And so those are increases that have happened over the last three years. So that's a huge percentage. So we're working on trying to get more funding, and that's something people could do through their state legislators, is to support the bills that are asking the states to work, even they fund the jail bills that are before the legislature. So we don't have a direct impact, but through your legislators, you could have an impact.
Thanks, Catherine. I appreciate the, the further explanation of that. Okay, so I will just kind of go over municipal property tax impacts quickly here, just to give a perspective. So I'll start at the top here, and you see that the, the, the value of an average home in Reedfield now is around, or will be around three hundred Three hundred eighty thousand dollars when you uh, account for um, that twenty-five percent factor that we're looking at for this year. Uh, and that's, uh, that's a lot, uh, but it's also, it it fits with what you're seeing in the real estate market. It it's amazing to see. Uh, a modular home with with four acres go for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's what we're seeing. Uh, and on the high end, we're seeing homes in the six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, not even on the water. Uh, so it has been uh, uh, amazing. Uh, and uh, just just, you know, uh, dumbfounding market, uh, and we're certainly having to respond to that. Uh, so what what we see is that the municipal mill rate is down a little bit from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. Uh, by about a tenth of a of a of a mill. Uh, but, um, with the valuation change, that does result, of course, in higher. Um, higher expenses. So the out-of-pocket impact uh, for the average taxpayer last year to this year, again, this is the the median. And I should say median, not average, because that's, we want to be more accurate about that. But, uh, any event, uh, about seventy to seventy-one dollars. So if you think about it, it's about um, seven dollars a month.
For the municipal.
I'm sorry, six, six dollars a month.
That's the part we're voting on.
That's the part, yeah, that's the part that the the select board and budget committee have control over, uh, and I just wanted to put it into perspective so that folks could know that. Yes, they have to put out about six dollars more a month to count for uh, the the services that the municipality is providing. Uh, and then comparing that, if you go down, um, I always try to look at a stable base here before COVID, uh, because it helps normalize things. Uh, we're only looking at a twelve percent increase since two thousand eighteen. So that tells us two things. Uh, one is that, uh, I think that we've we've done a fairly good job of trying to keep costs down. Uh, but I think, uh, in in hindsight, we probably did too good of a job. I think that we probably were too conservative. Uh, and we're going to be faced with a few years of of slightly higher increases than what we've seen. You know, we did our best, uh, we we thought we had a revenue picture that we could count on. We thought we had, um. Uh, you know, a stable provision of services from from the towns, uh, and those things have changed, uh, and a lot of things changed. But the end result is that we, um, we we did as good as we could for as long as we could, but now we're we're needing to, uh, to face some increases.
Just going to take a brief interruption, Eric, and welcome Ed Sims and Sean Keegan to the meeting. They had other commitments and have now arrived. Thanks, Eric.
All right, I'll start back from the beginning and we'll. So again, we'll continue on with this big picture discussion. Uh, and we'll talk about fund highlights, um, and uh, fund balances. And so. Uh, we do use our funds, and these bullet points, a few of them are the same every year because we do the same thing, uh, every year. Uh, and that's, I think, good and important for us to be doing. Uh, but the funds are used to to stabilize tax impacts. Uh, and we're doing that again this year. We also use them, if we can, uh, to offset some capital expenses, and we're doing that also this year. Uh, but to a smaller degree, because as noted, we really are focusing on finishing what we've got in process. Uh, and most of that work already has funding, uh, uh, that's been allocated and reserved. Uh, so we don't see a real big draw on those designated fund balances. But, um, they are conservative, and we always do try to. Um, reconcile those with our audit, uh, and so that does give us a bit of a delay. Uh, but, uh, again, we use that data to help, um, project and stabilize those those balances. Um, and so due to intentional use, as I noted, um, those balances have begun to drop. We, uh, have over the last several years. Used a lot of, uh, those funds to help minimize tax impacts, to pay for projects, uh, and that's all been intentional, and that's all well and good. But we are seeing, um, I guess what I would call the narrowing of the funnel, uh, where, um, we can't continue and sustain that level of of. Withdrawal. Uh, and so, uh, we are, um, reducing those those uses this year. Uh, and we'll continue to do so next year and the year after, um, and maybe into the future beyond that, as Marty had noted. Uh, so we're down by about eleven thousand, six hundred fifty for the designated funds. Again, those are our project funds. Um, and we just don't have as much, uh, project, uh, activity happen. So the use of undesignated funds is down by twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, uh, that's to ensure that we have money available to. Uh, offset future tax impacts and to not have a hard bump where we keep rolling along, using three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And all of a sudden, we can only draw a hundred. Uh, that's a heck of a, of an impact. Uh, on on take taxpayers, and we want to avoid that. Uh, and then we, of course, have our two-twelve's, um. Uh, minimum, um, uh, undesignated fund balance, uh, and that's for total annual budget expenses. And that includes, uh, the school and county commitments that we have, and we'll we'll meet that this year. Uh, it'll be. Only by a a few percentage points. I think we're a hundred and four percent maybe, uh, but, uh, I'll have to look at that. Graph here, and I'm not sure this shows it, but, um, any event, we'll meet it this year, and next year, we're going to have to continue to work on that. Uh, and I will say that by the time we're done with our, uh, balancing of this, uh, we likely will be below that threshold. Uh, in two or three years, uh, but I'm okay with that, I think, uh, because of. We've done a good job of of controlling, uh, that dissent. Um, and so this, uh, is a graphical representation of, uh. Uh, assigned and unassigned fund balances, and, um, assigned are in red. Uh, um, the unassigned are in blue, uh, if you want to look at it without colors, the, uh, on the left-hand side of every stack. That is the assigned balance, and on the unassigned balance, that's on the right-hand side of each stack. Uh, so you can follow along, you can see that we we have a, uh, patterns. Of of growth and then, uh, reduction. Uh, our assigned fund balances have drawn down very quickly. Uh, because we had some major capital projects, and we have, uh, basically fully, fully gotten those down to where they. I need to be. The yellow star indicates the fiscal year that we're currently budgeting for. Uh, and as you can see, we will have a stabilization of the assigned fund balance and hopefully a little bit of growth, uh, for future needs. Uh, in that category, and then unassigned fund balance, uh, we're going to continue to draw that down, uh, but at a slower rate. Uh, than what we've done in the past, uh, and that's out of necessity, uh, due to, uh, limited fund balances.
Could you just in a couple sentences explain for the public the difference between assigned funds and unassigned funds? Maybe give an example of each.
Uh, sure. So assigned fund balances are anything that is in our capital reserve or a a reserve fund policy. Uh, it's things that are, um, uh, have a specific purpose, right? So cemetery reserves, uh, road capital. Um, transfer station operating reserve, although that, uh, those are just some examples. Uh, and then the unassigned fund balance is our general fund, uh, money that doesn't have a designated purpose. Usually that comes in from money that's left over at the end of the year. Uh, and I'll point out that, uh, because of that. Uh, and because of the work we've done to constrict and be more, uh, much more, um. Um, uh, conservative with our budgeting, uh, we've just seen less money at the end of the year left over to go into those funds. So. Uh, it's a sign of our own success, but it does have consequences.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment about the, uh, the designated funds. Uh, there is combined, there is a pretty hefty balance of over a million dollars. And that helps with our general, uh, investment, ju- in- investment income. Uh, we can't invest out very far because, uh, the people who manage each of those. Uh, designated funds may be calling on us, but on the town to expend some of their their account balance. So we can't, like, just put it out to get one-year CDs for a billion, one point two million dollars. But it does generate some investment income, then, and that investment income goes back into the general fund. Uh, it's it's not, it doesn't go back into the individual designated funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Marty. And and I will say, we do account for a lot of that as revenue, so it doesn't really help with our remaining balance at the end of the year. Because it gets spent, a lot of it, but but it it's a great point, Marty. Um, and I do appreciate Marty, uh, helping, uh, to look at those. Um, those funds more analytically, uh, which is a help to to everybody, uh, myself included. So. So moving on, we will go to. Long-term debt, uh, and this is the other piece, um, of of our, um, kind of big picture. That we want to look at when we talk about stabilizing the rate, uh, and stabilizing expenditure. Uh, we we've had a very stable, um, for the last few years. Uh, level of expense for debt service. We haven't, uh, taken on, uh, too much new debt. Uh, we did just, uh, start with a, a new fire truck in two thousand twenty-three, uh, and that's going to be the the one that's ongoing for for the longest, uh, going forward. Uh, we will pay off, uh, a small, um, uh, twenty eighteen municipal dam. Uh, bond in, uh, twenty thirty or twenty twenty-nine, uh, but that's not going to open up a lot of room for additional debt. Uh, and we're going to have to be careful as we go forward about what we borrow, uh, because the, um. The interest payments on those and the principal payments can can add up, uh, but I think that we will have to borrow again in the future. Uh, but it's just a matter of, um, of trying to understand, um, how to do it with with minimal impact. And balancing it out with reserves, uh, up until very recently, I was able to work, uh, pretty actively with our debt service and our reserve balances. In in order to, um, you know, put less money in one and more in the other perhaps, uh, but we're not really, uh, in that same position that we were. Uh, the one area where I think that we've we've done pretty well with that, uh, is with the road bonds. Uh, we paid off, uh, our our last road bond. Where was it? Twenty twenty-four, yeah. Um, and we have done a lot of savings. We've have, we have a really robust plan. Uh, we actually do need a little bit of money to to go back into that, and we'll talk about that later with with, um, I think, anyway, with some of the. Uh, road discussion, but, uh, we've done pretty well with that, but we still do need a little bit of extra to make sure that we can have enough funds. To maintain our paving schedule. So that's going to take, um, uh, some some creative thinking, but, uh, so far, it it's not going to require any additional funding. Uh, and that, I think, is a good thing for the time being. Uh, so moving on to revenue highlights, uh, this is where we start talking about the the more nuts and bolts of the of the budget, uh, and the individual, uh, program areas. Uh, we did, uh, project a point seven-five percent tax increase, uh, that's for new value and, um. New improvements, uh, for construction. Uh, I think that's about right. Uh, we may be able to squeeze another quarter percent out of that. But it's not going to result in a massive change in, uh, uh, in what that, uh, creates, uh, or what that creates for tax base. So it won't have a big impact on the, um, uh, on the overall tax, uh, mill rate. Uh, state revenue sharing is estimated up slightly from three hundred seventy to three hundred eighty-five thousand. Again, that's based on state data. Um, and I'll, this is the first point and probably the only point I'll point out, um, that we don't know what's going to happen with state revenue sharing, in large part. Because we don't know what's happening in federal, um, spending. Uh, it's chaos, and we hope for the best. Uh, but this budget is not built on any kind of, um, speculation based on what might happen or any kind of truly catastrophic events. Uh, so we're just going to hope for the best, uh, and and hope that our, uh, elected officials, uh, do the right thing by staying local government.
Eric, is that the only place in our revenue where we see any government funding coming through?
Uh, not at all. We see it all over the place, but, uh, it's just hidden. Uh, the library has it coming through, um, roads has it coming through. It's every place. So if there are problems, there will be big problems. Um, but again, we're not, we're not going that direction quite yet. Um, we're planning on things being, um, generally as they are and being conservative where we where we think it's appropriate.
Great.
Yeah. Uh, so investment income, uh, is up by a thousand dollars. Again, that's due to 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 investment, um, putting another five hundred thousand dollars. Into into CDs on short-term basis. Uh, also, the yields are going up again, um, uh, when, um, when there's a. A disruption to the stocks, uh, bond yields typically go up, uh, and we're we're seeing that. Um, who knows whether that's going to stay, uh, the case. But, um, right now, we're seeing a fairly healthy four and a half plus percent on six-month, um. Uh, and maybe even a little bit better on three-month yields, but, uh, our budget included, um, much more modest, I think, four percent and below. Um, so we are, um, preparing for some uncertainty there, uh, but we put a little bit more money in. Uh, so we're buffering against some of those impacts by doing that. Uh, motor vehicle revenues are up by twenty-five thousand dollars from six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, but again, I'll point out that, uh, FY twenty-four. Revenue was over six seventy, and we'll probably be close to that, if not six eighty, six eighty-five this year. But, um, with tariffs, we're likely going to see a drop. Uh, we'll see a bump in the next couple of months as people, uh, panic buy vehicles. Um, and then after that, we're prob- if they stay in effect, those tariffs will have an impact, uh, and motor vehicle revenue will drop off pretty significantly. Twenty-one thousand dollars in use of designated fund, uh, and, uh, three hundred and twenty-five thousand in designated fund, uh, to offset taxes. So. Um, we've talked about those already. Uh, this is a summary of all of the individual departments. Uh, administration, you see revenues up by a five point four percent. Uh, that unfortunately does include taxes. So, uh, we we're seeing an increase there, uh, in large part because of, uh, increased, uh. Uh, tax commitment. The, um, revenue in other areas is fairly stable, uh, parks and revenue, uh, proxy. It is revenue. Uh, Parks and Rec has done a good job of of bringing in more money. Um, they are spending more. Uh, but in that, it it generally balances out and might even be a slightly positive relative to the position last year. Um, of course, that doesn't include use of of funds for, um, uh, capital, uh, projects, but, uh, we are seeing that increase that we hope we would. Uh, by bringing in a programming, uh, director, uh, to help, uh, enhance and expand those programs. Uh, but again, right now, it's fairly well neutral.
And Eric?
Yeah.
What is, uh, can you give us an update on swim lessons?
Yeah, uh, I I got the contract today, uh, from the YMCA, so we will be offering swim lessons again, uh, which is a big win, uh, for us. It'll cost us three thousand dollars. We will probably, uh, break even, maybe come out a little bit ahead, depending on how registrations go. But, uh, I'm ecstatic to have that program.
It's been a long time since we've been able to do that.
Yeah, we did it once, like, the second year of COVID, but it was limited, and it didn't work out very well, and, um, I'm just excited to get it back on track. So, absolutely.
And that was in large part due to our new, uh, program coordinator.
Absolutely. I I wouldn't have had time to, um, uh, work with the YMCA and other groups, uh, to get that to happen. So he actually deserves a lot of credit for that.
Just want to point out the good things that happen. Um, you know, I've been talking about all these challenges we have, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good to point out the the highlights, uh, and the positives. Um, a little bit increase in, um, uh, capital improvements. Uh, and, um, uh, we have, um, about an eight percent increase in solid waste revenue projected. Again, we have increased costs there, so that's, uh, something that we have to, um, uh, look at as well. Otherwise, things are fairly well static. Uh, general assistance, um, we are, uh, uh, down, um, uh, but that. Something's not right here. I'm seeing, I've got some, I've got a a a label missing here. Uh, so some of these, um. Uh, columns are not, um, not in the correct spot. So I'm glad I looked at that again. Uh, I'll correct that for the next one. Uh, and anything online. It looks like the, um, uh, general assistance should be the, uh, twenty-five hundred because it's half. So I'd say if we back up to, okay, capital improvements, um, shouldn't shouldn't be there. What I see is a duplication on the bottom line. So. What we want to do is, um, move, uh, pretend capital improvements, uh, sixty-five goes away, just on the left-hand side. Uh, move everything up, uh, and then we'll get to where we, um, or move everything down, and we'll get to where we ought to be. Um, so basically, starting with, um, that sixty-five, uh, line, everything should move down. So solid waste is thirty-five thousand, uh, unclassifieds nineteen, general assistance is twenty-five, uh, and and so on. So, uh, I'm I'm gonna have to clean that up and apologize for that error.
I think we can live with it.
Yeah, well, it's, it really bugs me because I I remember.
Sorry, you weren't perfect tonight, but you were, you know, ninety-nine percent there.
So far.
So far, well, yeah. You're a wise man, Steve. So I'll correct that on the website in a year. Uh, so moving on to expense highlights, um, administration, uh, labor, labor insurance costs are up. Um, but those are really offset by decreases in other areas, um, and that doesn't happen every year, so that's a kind of a a bit of a blessing for us this year. Uh, off, office equipment is up by seventeen thousand five hundred, um, and that's mostly because of our our investment in computer hardware and software. Uh, but again, that's very much in line with our goals, uh, and so that's anticipated and necessary expense to meet those goals. Uh, assessing is up to cover, uh, full cost of of online GIS software. Grant writing and planning, uh, was reduced by five thousand dollars. And that was really just to help, uh, short-term, uh, budget. Short-term budget savings, that was a temporary cut, I hope. Because we do need those funds, we're probably going to have limited grant funds coming through as the federal government cuts. Their offerings to other entities, and so that's going to be a short-term impact as well, I hope. Legal fees are down by five thousand dollars, that really does get us back to a more normal level of spending. Of about ten thousand dollars a year for legal fees, so it's taken us a while to get there, but we're there. And I hope we continue with that level. And we also have a healthy reserve, so that if we do have a. Out of the blue lawsuit that costs us twenty-five thousand dollars, we've got funds there to cover something like that. Moving on with additional expense highlights. The maintenance department is up in net about eighteen hundred, which is not a lot. But again, it's it's labor and material costs that we're facing there. Community services animal control up is. Animal control is up around twenty-three fifty due to shelter costs. But that's money well spent, the level of service we get from that. Partner we have with the Connecticut Valley Humane Society is is truly amazing, I had a pleasure of touring with them. And I'm just amazed at how much they do with how little they they get from municipalities, they have a lot of private donations. But I'll just say that even though we're looking at an increase, I think it's justified. The library is up. Sixteen hundred seventeen, again, mostly due to labor expenses, they don't have a lot of. Outside of that, they're kind of like the schools in that way, most of their expenses are related to labor. Recreation parks and activities, beach expenses are down over twenty-two hundred, close to twenty-three. And that's due to maintenance and staff time cuts. This is one of the areas where I I don't feel great about making cuts, but I think that we have shaved a little bit. And I think that we can get away with it for a year or two, but I will say that I don't believe that should be a long-term trend. Considering how important that beach is to us. The recreation programming is up about fifty-six hundred. But again, you saw the revenue side earlier, that's mostly, if not fully offset by increased revenue. And I will say that there's a little bit of uncertainty here because we are building out, expanding programs, adding programs. So the expense and revenues, they're a little bit soft, but I think that the 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 commitment is there to make sure that those things. Protection, fire department is down, and I'll again thank Lee Mank and his officers for. Helping to look at the budget and find areas where we could cut. Just, you know, in large part to help reduce the tax taxpayers. But also in line with what we've been doing over the past few years to pull. Un-unexpanded balances out of those budgets, so we're continuing to do that. So the fire department's down, but ambulance budget is up over twenty-three percent. Close to four, over fourteen thousand, and that's mostly due to Winthrop charging us more for the services that that we receive from them. And that one is a hard pill to swallow because that's only half of the increase. Next year, that increase will be thirty thousand dollars over last year. It's pretty, pretty difficult to deal with. We have come to a consensus that the ambulance service. There's probably not a lot we can do about that, it seems to be justifiable. From a business perspective. It's still hard pill for us because we we like to see it operate more as a. An inter-local mutual aid type service, but we can't necessarily blame a town for wanting to. Cover their expenses in that sense. Put it that way. Dispatching is up an estimated thirty-three percent or sixteen thousand dollars, and and that is again due to Winthrop proposing drastic fee increases. And this one, I'll say we are contesting, and I believe they are unjustified and inequitable. And I'm giving them a really hard time about it on behalf of the select board and the taxpayers. Because I just don't think their model is. Well, it's not right. So we have negotiated, we are continuing to negotiate. We will certainly see a cost increase that's less than what's put on paper here. But I don't know exactly what that's going to be yet. I can just say that Chief Mank and I are very, very much trying to 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 keep this thing on an even keel. And we're not to the point yet of looking at switching services, but we are investigating that as an option. And we're going to do our very best to make sure that those costs, those costs are are fair. Because it was a a pretty dramatic increase and. Well, anyway, we're going to try to save some money there, that's one area where we can, I believe. But not to belabor that one, we'll move on to cemeteries. And we're looking at a twenty-five hundred dollar increase there. That is to account for a. A site pen for the cemetery sextimposition. What we would have seen is a higher. Number in the maintenance department. If, if not for this transfer, right, so what happened was. We split out administratively the cemetery sextimposition from the. Maintenance to position. And we reduced the budget for wages for that position by about a dollar an hour, which is about two thousand twenty dollars. And shifted that over into the cemetery budget, so. The only real difference here is about three to five hundred dollars, depending on how you look at it, for. A little bit more of an incentive to get someone into that position. We have filled that position, and I do believe that we've got a a pretty. Good value for that. It will be an improvement to upper operations. And give a little bit of reprieve from the maintenance staff from having to run around in circles in the summertime. Dealing with burials and and some of that chaos, they can focus on their other work. Roads and drainage, that's up over twenty-four thousand dollars for summer and winter road maintenance. That's material costs and contract costs. Salt is continuing to go up, as is the cost of pretty much everything from gravel to asphalt. Solid waste, cost, so it costs up three percent in this area. Again, labor-related. It's, this is an area where we've done quite well, expenses have been cut and kept to a bare minimum. Revenues have been increasing slightly, and that's helped also with the the net overall, but. Really, truly, on the expense side, we're seeing a real, a real modest increase there. Education tax, I'm just, this is where we talk about things that are in our our budget, but not. Part of the municipal expense, county and education, we've talked about those already. Moving on, back into departments that are within our purview, we have debt service and a twenty-three hundred dollar decrease there. You saw that in that graph, lower payments. And unclassified is down by five thousand dollars. And that's a reduction in contingency that we have available for emergencies at the discretion of the select board. Emergencies or unforeseen expenses, I'll put it that way, it's not just emergencies. Sometimes things, things happen that are important but aren't emergencies. And that fund is there to help with that, but that was cut also, again, to try to keep the impact on taxpayers down, so. Where we could, we did. And let's see, capital reserves. This is where we show the expenses that are going into reserves. We have five thousand dollars for cemeteries, fourteen thousand for transfer station. Cemeteries that that will cover and help offset some of the cost of of capital work. Stone repair, things like that, transfer station, that's our lease for the compactor and the J C, J C B backhoe. And that's our portion of that. It's also our reserve for future expenses, so that's all those things together, that's the Reed Field share of that. The municipal buildings, forty-eight thousand. Again, that's for things like repairs to the windows, septic systems. And that's all municipal buildings, that's any work done to the library, fire station, town office, and. And that's just about it. Roads, we have three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars there. Three hundred thousand of that is for paving, and we did put in thirty-four thousand dollars to help. With the design costs for the salt sand shed. Which Catherine mentioned earlier, and I'll just quickly point out that. We we know we're not going to be bonding for that this year, we know we're not going to be building this year and and possibly not next. But we do know that we have to prepare for that inevitable eventual expense. And so we're trying to get ahead of it and get a plan in place. So we can know, A, what we're going to be building and hopefully what it's going to cost. Perhaps even put out an RFP for design build or whatever services we need. But we're kind of, we're not ignoring it, but we're taking, I think, responsible steps within the budget that we have available. To move to a point where we can make more informed decisions. The administrative technology, we have five thousand dollars there going in for the low-power FM station. And I'll just give a quick update on that, we're making great progress, we have most of the equipment ordered. I did panic buy. A lot of those electronics this past month because we expect increases on anything from China. Or overseas, and that's pretty much everything that we would be using for that system. We have. Working on software and the team that's involved, we expect we'll have the the whole thing up and running in time for a soft launch at Heritage Days in August. So, good news there, that'll be great for public safety and for community building. Fire apartment, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's to help with things like SCBA packs, air compressors. Offsetting the cost of new trucks, although really, honestly, that's not in here anymore. That's just for major capital repairs. If we have a fire truck in the future, we're going to have to bond for it, probably the full cost. But that's hopefully ten to fifteen years out. Moving on to maintenance, twenty-nine thousand dollars there, and that's for things like. Reserves for replacing the pickup truck or the dump truck, or the Sanders, or. The J, the Bobcat. It's actually a pretty modest amount for the amount of equipment we have, but we do have a good maintenance schedule, we have a pretty long life. For most of that equipment. Although we had a bit of a lumen with that last diesel truck, but we're not gonna.
That's all done.
Yeah, that's all done. Maintenance covered that, so the total there is four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And and that is a big chunk of our municipal budget, but again, you look at that list, you think about what it's for. It's all for things that the town wants, and I think it does fit in with our our, you know, budget motto of of. The services people want, the level of service they expect, and doing it cost-effectively, so I can say with confidence that we've done a very good job meeting that. And that's really it for expenses, this is the. Tabular form of what we just talked about, and this one is is accurate. As far as I can tell, it looks pretty darn good, so. I I will say that that other one, the bottom line was correct, but something happened earlier. But this one, this one's right, so nothing really jumps out. We see increases in protection that are double-digit, cemeteries double-digit, again. One of those because we had a big dollar increase with things beyond our control in the protection department. The other is the law of numbers, that small numbers make big percentages sometimes. And so that's what we have there, looking at county tax, fifteen percent increase, school four point seven, but that's likely going to be less. And so overall, an average of a five percent increase. Which isn't terrible and is going to get better, so I expect it will be near five or under five. For expenses in total. And that's really the. The budget. In a nutshell. And nothing extraordinary, like I said, we're doing what we have to, and I'll stop there and let. Select board, budget committee, offer any comments, and then we can open it up to public, if we have any.
Well, first, a big thank you, that was not ninety minutes, we appreciated that, and you weren't talking too fast that we couldn't follow, so thank you very much, Eric.
Sure thing.
It was very thorough, do we have any comments from the public? It looks like we might have one person online, Jaren, can you see any on Zoom?
Would you like to say anything, Jaren?
From the budget committee, do you have anything you'd like to ask or share?
Working on the budget is never easy. There's more uncertainty about in so many ways right now, but. I think Eric had a very good approach, try to stay. Keep it as normal as possible, knowing that. If things really go sideways. Because of things out of our control. We do have a strong fund balance, we can, we can buy time to adjust to whatever is coming along.
That's good, and there are some expenses that we have that we could postpone if we had to because. We were short on revenue coming in. Anyone from the select board, comments, questions? I have one question, Teresa, for you afterwards on a online item. So I'll just ask it then, too detailed for this audience. So with that. I guess we will move on to the warrant highlights. And the L U O stuff, and then we'll have some closing comments, and. Timekeepers, how are we doing? All right, we're ahead. Don't let it go to your head, Eric.
Let me, let me open up that, I thought I wanted to draw out for a minute so we could look at each other, but I'll I'll put the slideshow back up.
So it's the proposed L U O revisions that we're going to be coming to. Which I mentioned previously, the planning board will be holding the public hearing for, that's under their purview.
Okay, let me, I'm almost there, I'm just gonna get back into this and share it. Okay, is that shown? Okay, all right. So the the warrant, this year is actually pretty straightforward. We have streamlined a number of articles, I'll just start with a little bit of discussion about that. We have. One thing that I want to point out is that we don't have anybody right now running for the school board. So I will say, if anybody has an interest, I think that we still have an opportunity for a write-in. And I'd very much like to see somebody that has an interest and a commitment to that process, please step forward. You know, let let folks know, let us know in the town office, and we can, you know, anybody that's writing, we can put, we can put those names out. Because we do want to make sure that we continue to have good representation with the school board, and I'd hate to see a vacancy. So I'll just put that pitch out there.
One?
One, one, just one, just one, so it's approachable, but I I wanted to point that out. We have also kind of streamlined some articles in the past, we've kind of made changes to the administration ordinance. And taken some of those routine, really perfunctory articles. Excuse me, move them into the purview of the select board administratively through that administration ordinance, so we we were able to kind of reduce a few. Articles over the past few years, and I think one more at least this year, through that kind of progressive effort. And. When you get to the back of the the warrant, once you get through all the things that we just talked about with the budget. What we have is the the ordinance provisions. And this year, they really, it doesn't look like it, but they all effectively relate to the land use ordinance, and that's because the land use ordinance. Was. Adopted by reference several other ordinances that are really truly related to land use. And those all are up for update, and it's one of the projects that Catherine has been advocating for. And the planning board went through diligently and looked at all those kind of, you know, put off to the side, back. Back burner ordinances that hadn't been updated, some of them for ten years plus. And so some of the changes were were minor, some of them were more substantial. But all of those articles that were adopted by reference were reviewed and do have changes, so. I listed these here, and and nothing, you know, truly extraordinary in these, a lot of it has to do with keeping pace with state statute. Or dealing with other minor revisions that help improve the function of those ordinances. So that's the the end of of the land use ordinance piece, but backing up, the land use ordinance itself. Did see and has gone through a similar process of revision, multiple iterations. Individuals taking little pieces from the planning board and bringing it back to the whole group for discussion, they had a very good, robust process. And are essentially trying to pull in all the pieces of. Of of L D two thousand and three that that need housekeeping. If you remember correctly, we passed the bulk of that, which is the. Basically accessory housing and affordable housing state mandate that that came down. And we were required to put certain provisions in our ordinance, we did that, we did the best we could with what we had. And they've had some changes, and we've had some things that we realized don't work out. And they had some requests of us in general with our language to just fine-tune it and and make. and make it a little bit more in line with what they were looking for. So that's my best summary of what, of what happened with the land use revisions this year. And Alaska Delica, for her as well. If there was anything else that you think that you saw that was noteworthy in that process?
Only twelve years versus last year.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, Angelica's the staff person that helps out with the select board. Or excuse me, the planning board minutes and document management. So yeah, the board secretary, I guess. So that's, that's really it for the ordinance provisions. Again, pretty explainable. And I guess the last thing we have now are the, the closing communications unless anybody had questions on the land use changes.
I guess I took that out of order. And Eric, there's only one being bored. So now you're down to ninety-eight point nine percent. Well, if we're gonna make it perfect, let's do it all the way. Anyone here at the table have any other comments?
I have a question. You said there was going to be a public hearing on the land use ordinance, but I don't see that date listed.
Oh, yeah, I didn't list that. It's coming right up. I just got put in the paper, I believe. Did you already do that? No, that's why I didn't include it. It was already, it was already posted and processed. Okay, all right. That's probably why I didn't include it.
So in our upcoming meetings, this group here tonight will be present again on May seventh to do this again, but that will be after the warrants are approved and signed and ready to be published. It will already be published by then, right, Eric? That's so that people can follow along?
Yeah, so that's the, the second, the second one, yes.
Right. So I think the select board is meeting on the twenty-ninth of April to finalize the budget and the warrant and then submit it to the budget committee who's meeting the next night on the thirtieth.
Yep.
And then that should be, we're all in agreement at that time, and if not, we're going to work it out. So if we have similar attendance on May seventh as we've had tonight, that will be our final public hearing for the year. If we do have a crowd come out and there are any issues that we need to address, then we'll be holding a second one at the end of May. Absentee ballots come out on May twelfth. They will be just for the town municipal. They can get state and RSU absentee ballots later. Is that correct?
Yes, so they'll be, it'll, because of the way the sequencing works with the school and the printing and all that stuff, and they're voting. And they do have a vote just before that. We have our absentee ballots available in line with state law. But what most people do, because the school ballots are actually available two or three days later, it's not a big difference. They just say, yeah, you can hold it for me for a couple of days, and then you put it all in one mail-in that goes out that way.
Okay. And then the the town meeting secret ballot is on June tenth, and there is in-person voting here at the town office. That, does that open up on May twelfth also?
I believe so. Don't quote me on that.
But contact the town office if you wish to know. Someone downstairs will have that information.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure, but I don't want to.
And you can bring, we will be sending out the explanation mailer again this year?
We will. I'm going to start working on that next.
Okay, and you may bring that with you when you vote in person or use it as you vote at home. Anything else? Great work, everybody. And timekeepers, how much did we finish early tonight?
I believe that's fifty minutes.
Five zero minutes, Eric.
Make a motion to adjourn before it's forty-eight.
All those in favor, that would be unanimous, and we are adjourned at seven forty-one. Thank you, everyone.